All right, I'd like to call to order the Village of Marvin Parks Recreation and Greenway Board Meeting here on October 6th at 9:11 a.m. The first item on the agenda is to determine if we have a quorum. And with myself, Christina Colt, and Dan Wilson attending remotely, I determine that we do have a quorum. We also do have our council liaison, Kimberly Vandenberg here as well. And the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I believe we do have a few amendments to make. Do I have a motion on the table to add item number three to unfinished business items, which would be item number three, a discussion of park fees?
And you can do them all in one motion?
And I would also look to move number four from the agenda items, which is the administration of oath to a new board member, to number five, which would be at the back end of new business items.
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right.
You still need to adopt the agenda as amended?
And do I also hear a motion on the table to adopt the agenda as it has been amended?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to move now down to the adoption of the minutes from September 8th, 2020. Any questions or further discussion on those minutes? Okay.
Sherry is on now.
She is here.
You can reopen the agenda if you want to move her swearing in back up.
Okay.
So you need to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah.
There we go.
Do we have a motion on the table to adopt the September 1st, 2020 minutes as they are written?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can make an adjustment to the agenda to move item number five under new business items, which would be the administration of oath to a new board member, to item number six prior to the public comment period, and move public comment period to item number seven. Any further discussion?
We need a...
Oh, we need a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So here we can welcome Sherry Albano. And we have the oath of office for you to be able to respond to here. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Sherry, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sherry Albano...
I, Sherry Albano.
...do solemnly swear, or affirm...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina...
And the Constitution of all of North Carolina.
...not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...as Parks, Recreation and Greenways Advisory Board Member.
As Parks, Recreations and Advisories Member. Sorry, I'm...
You're fine.
It's a little choppy here.
You're fine. So help me God.
The mic would probably be better.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yay! Welcome aboard, Sherry.
Thank you, Sherry.
All right, let me just pull up the agenda.
The next item on the agenda, number seven, is public comment. I don't see any public to comment here, but is there anyone else online that wishes to speak a public comment? I do see at least one other person there. Without hearing anything further from anyone wanting to comment, we'll close that out. And the next item on the agenda to move to is the park manager's update. And on the park manager's update, the item number one is Tullamore Trail update.
Okay, can you hold those pictures up?
Yeah, give me half a minute.
You're fine. I just wanted to let you guys know they are still in the process of working on the Tullamore Trail. They did run into a little bit of snag with materials. If you've done any building or seen that there's a little bit of a shortage on some supplies, so they're waiting on some more of those. But they have made some good progress in the meadow portion.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Materials are now, looks really good. Few roots and stuff to be trimmed, you know, and a kind of like another re-smoothing. This is the rough end per se. And then in the woods, a couple weeks ago, when we had stretches of rain, it made it real muddy, so he was making a few alterations to some of the piping and the bridges. Can you go to that other picture?
Not that one.
No, that one. So that was some of the work that he was having to do just to traverse a few of the wet channels. He's there as much as he can, he's just waiting on materials to be available.
And how long was this trail?
Why would you ask me that? I won't say it's like a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
And while we're talking about those couple of gully washers, I know we had done a lot of the park too with kind of redoing some of the trails. Did they hold up pretty well?
So far, yeah.
As well. I walked them a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, they're holding up really well. A couple different trail running groups are out there and are very pleased.
Okay, so anything else there?
Any questions on Tullamore?
Yeah, looks great. All right, moving on to unfinished business items. Item number one is National Night Out plans and... Derek, I know we've got some news on that.
Yeah, obviously, I hope to discuss everybody's plans for tonight, but we made the decision yesterday to cancel the event after consulting with the attorney in conjunction with the governor's executive orders for outdoor gathering limits. So it is what it is. The band, I was real excited about the band, I think they're gonna be good, and they want to just, you know, be kept in mind for our next event, so I'll definitely be reaching out to them. And we'll just transition some of our plans we had over until to the next event. Any questions about that?
Yeah, the only thing I'd say is, you know, we don't have, other than I see we have the tree lighting, which is our next kind of normally scheduled event, you know, after the fall, as we start to get into the holiday season. But then as we start to look to coming out of this again, of course, and what we're gonna do for events going forward, I think, especially given the fact that we're working on having a little more police coverage, that whatever event we do, that we make sure we extend an invitation to the officers to perhaps be able to attend that as well. And, you know, just to give them some more visibility in the community and more of an opportunity for the public to be able to interact, know who they are, and maybe talk about things, you know, in their different neighborhoods and so forth. So just to make sure that we do extend to them, because I'm sure there's a lot of pre-work planning they put into, and just want to make sure they know and understand the appreciation and the exposure we do want to give them to the public in general. Okay, and then other than that, you know, it's not like National Night Out is postponing or anything. We'll just look to next year, probably in the August timeframe, you know, before things get back to normal to some degree.
Yeah, I think whenever we look at the calendar and set up our events for next year, we decide if we want to go back to the summer date, the August date, or that we want to use the alternate October date. That comes down from National Night Out, the organization, we didn't just make up that October date, they provide that as an alternate.
So was that an alternate just because of COVID, or that's generally an alternate date?
Probably a later...
Generally, an alternate date. I think they just give communities an option. I like the August better, I think being that it's summer and school's on in, we'll get a better attendance. It's hot, but, you know, it's outdoors, it's supposed to be hot in August. So we can look at that the first of the year, I think, and see what, maybe make some contingency plans for society and pandemics or whatever.
Next item on the agenda, also Derek, is roundabout planting contract update.
Yeah, so your plan that you guys approved went to council, they approved it with the grass being in the middle or being in the strips...
The zoysia.
Zoysia, rather than the river rock. And I put that out to bid, and I actually got a larger company to bid it, Summit Landscape, and they proposed to do it for roughly right under 12, to do both roundabouts, which was both roundabouts.
Both for 12?
Yes. Yes. And I even double-checked, I was like, and he said, "Yeah, man." So they, you know, they've got the size to...
Was it, did you say it was 12,000?
It was just under that.
Just under 12?
Wow.
So...
No, it was just under 10.
I think it was 10-something.
It was just, it was right on 10.
Yeah, 10-something, it was under 11.
Well, this is a little fair.
Yeah.
And just as far as the specs and kind of discussing that, one of the things that we did talk about was, you know, then needing to get a lot of the band dirt out and put a lot, because that's one of the things that I was kind of afraid was gonna run off the cost lines.
Yep, the engineer went out there...
And it's been a dirt or good dirt in.
The engineer went out there, shot it, gave the measurements of the number of yards of dirt to come out.
Gotcha.
I submitted that to them.
Part of the yard.
Yeah, they brought in the, bringing in the new dirt, setting the crown with the right specs. So council approved that contract contingent on a couple little modifications that'll guarantee the plants and water, I think up to 12 months. And then they gave a little extra money. We had the 15,000 set aside, so they gave me some money within that 15,000 to use for periodic waterings if necessary until we establish an irrigation plan. Anything I missed on that?
Uh, no, just in the references. But did we, did they agree to all that?
They did.
So we're good, so we're ready to start planting?
Yeah, well, as soon as he writes it up and...
We get a sign.
We get it signed off. But I spoke to him that day, and he didn't have any problem with that. I mean, they do all the Delaware communities.
Yeah.
I mean, so you're, you know, you're talking about a big outfit. This is a two-day project for them.
And they're aware there's already some conduit in there for potential, you know, even though we don't have the water available now, but they have to work around that.
Yeah, the rep I'm working with lives right nearby, so he was very familiar with Newtown Road and the roundabouts.
We're gonna both done. Isn't that exciting?
Yeah.
We're working on that.
Working on that.
I should get one free. So, yeah, good news.
Don't start.
He said he'd have it done by the end of October.
Oh!
That's great.
My favorite people!
Wow, it's exciting.
Keep our thinking...
Do I need to draw up another plaque?
Maybe.
Okay. I said, "Do I need to have another plaque?"
Oh. All right, that's good news. Did you provide or are they providing back any sort of, you know, like a plan or an image of just, you know, so that we're sure it's kind of coming out how we looked? Did we provide that as part of the RFP?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the diagram.
Yeah, because we were still kind of working on it.
And then the engineer drew it up, you know, in the proper professional form per se.
No, draft paper.
Yeah, to scale.
Okay, we just hadn't seen that kind of product, so if you could just get us a copy.
Sure. Yeah. I'm gonna pull one of those right now.
Okay.
It's exciting.
That is wonderful.
Really good news.
All right, this moves on to item number three. Any further discussion? Sherry? Any further discussion? I know some of you weren't involved in it or at a particular meeting, but any questions that you have? Moving on to item number three, which is Christina asked us to add, which is a discussion of park fees. And this is in relation to, we had had a discussion a couple weeks ago regarding park fees, and then as Christina was talking about kind of a letterboxing project that we might want to get involved in with some other larger groups, how that could be affected if we were to do that, and then somebody's coming and having the park to do their letterboxing and so forth. So Christina, if you want to bring up it.
What we talked about during the letterboxing conversation was that we charged fees to get into the park. And I think you and Bob, John started talking about why do we do that, and do we make any money at that? And so we never did really wrap that up and either ask, I guess my question would be, do we make, how much money do we make in a year doing that? Is it worth the effort that must be required to do that? I've never had anybody come up to me and say they're trying to stick around the park, so I don't know how you connect all that stuff. I just don't know how it all works, and do we want to consider doing something else?
Yeah.
Like, no?
Yeah. And I think it kind of comes back to a philosophical question, and, you know, that it's kind of been addressed a number of different times over the years, and it kind of ebbs and flows, you know, depending on, number one, some of the wishes in terms of the different people that have been on or off council at different times. You know, I think, especially in the beginning, I think it was very important because, you know, even when we started building the park, there was a lot of dissension and some concern for people that were neighbors to the park, concerned about, you know, things getting out of hand or too loud, or, you know, imposing in whatever way on kind of some of the community around it. I don't think that's really ever turned into a much of a valid concern for those folks. Even the events that we have have been, you know, we've really not gotten any negative feedback out of that. But, you know, also important is as we look at who amongst the community, even right nearby the park, is either in Marvin or out of Marvin, you know, Marvin does provide things like our law enforcement capabilities that are above and beyond the county that help to justify in some of the taxes. And the park was also looked at something as really kind of a value add where, you know, the feeling on council at the time was that, you know, we were looking to give people reasons to want to be in Marvin. And, you know, there were people on both sides of it, because there's also a strong contingent of people that more or less feel that parks generally, you know, should be public to as great a degree as they can, because, you know, they're really there for the community, and whether you want to measure community as just the taxpayers, the way that Marvin's kind of built, you know.
Well, especially where that park is.
Yeah, it brings in around...
Sorry to interrupt, but I think the webex froze, so...
Oh, that's why it looks like that.
Yeah, so would you mind just...
Chill a minute?
Pause a second.
Yeah, yeah. See if the holes in the computer...
Because I looked up and thought your screen had gone whack.
Yeah.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, it has. I think the...
We've had a number of internet issues in the past week and a half.
That's why I'm sitting here today, I didn't even try that today.
Everybody's working remotely these days.
Kids, everybody.
I think Tuesday is the busiest day. I have more trouble on Tuesdays than any other day of the week, so I just give up on Tuesdays. I don't...
Have you already forgotten how bad some of the website committee meetings were on Thursdays?
That's true, that's true, but I didn't have any trouble with those personally. Oh, no, that is one time, I did have...
One time you did.
I always figured that.
There was an outage last week, there was an outage.
No, my internet connection is terrible. I mean, I live right over there, and it's just terrible.
We had a complete outage last week. It was like the windscreen had to come out, and they checked us, couldn't get it fixed. They apparently were working on the utility boxes for like hours and hours. We finally just gave up here.
Yeah, I understand.
Tried to work from home the rest of the day.
You guys have fiber though, here, right? Oh, yeah.
It took us forever to get that.
We have stone tablets across the street over there. I don't know what they call it, but it's, you know...
My neighborhood is all that stuff too, yeah.
DSL?
I don't know what it is, but it is...
We couldn't even get DSL because we're too far from Trump.
It's stone tablets.
In property estates. Just cable is the only, yeah, cable's the only option, really.
Can everybody hear us?
I can watch my signal just cycle in and out. It just does this. And sometimes it cycles too long off, and then it drops everything.
Oh, my God.
It's, you know, it's just 2020. Actually, it was always like that over there. Nothing to do with that.
Couple of years ago, my family, we had the most terrible internet issues for a whole year. We'd have two Wi-Fi maxes, and one would suddenly just disappear for three weeks, and three appear, and the other one would disappear.
That's like, wait, I'm not there. Oh, yeah, let's be awesome.
Thank God that we got that fixed before this year.
Well, the first two years we lived in the new house, we, to make a phone call...
You're over Meadowland.
Yeah, to make a phone call, we would have to go stand on the patio or deck.
With your cellphone?
Yeah, well, we don't have any other kind of phone in there. We can't get regular phones either, so we have to use a cellphone. No, you have to use a Wi-Fi signal to use your cellphone. So we did have a house phone, but who does he got? So go outside, take your telephone.
Just wait.
Will it allow you to log back in?
No, no, just wait.
Just tell him to wait around.
Just wait.
Okay. Oh, my God, that's so...
So it was like 1980 over there for two months. It was kind of awesome actually. It was great.
We also...
Like, sorry, I can't...
I can't talk to you. I can't watch TV, I can't do any of it. It's a worry book. You see, this is a book, but...
We also had a thing where at the end of my street, which is a cul-de-sac on Sandalwood, we couldn't even add new phone lines to a house, even when you wanted like landlines, because if you've ever heard of Rasmussen, the poller, Scott Rasmussen, which is presidential polling and everything...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
He used to live at the end of my neighborhood, and in his basement was where all of the people did all the research calls.
Oh, my God.
So he had like 20 or 30 phone trunks and took up all the phone lines in the neighborhood to that one house.
That's crazy.
He lived there until about 2001, you know, and then moved. The 2000 election is when Scott Rasmussen became famous. And then he moved out of our neighborhood and made a real business.
And stole all the phone lines.
Oh, that's crazy.
I've never heard of such a thing.
That's wild.
That's wild.
That's impressive that you can add new phone lines into one house. You didn't even allow it.
The other one was business.
Yeah, people in my neighborhood used to work part-time for him, going down into the basement and making the calls.
That's crazy.
That's where the 2000 research was done out of.
It's what an election that was.
Hello? Hello? All right. I don't know, this computer is frozen, but this is working out. All right.
Do that again. Can I see you?
Yeah. All right, so that computer's frozen, so gonna have to use this one.
I need my...
I'm gonna grab that flash drive off of it, yeah.
I need to save my data.
I need your data.
So save, close. Sorry, this, sorry, I'll...
That's all right.
Sorry, Sherry.
That's okay. Were you able to read any of my chat messages that I was sending?
No, no, could not see anything. Hey.
Okay, I need to...
Give me one second to...
We gotta change our setup here.
Yeah, we gotta change our setup here.
I need to get, sit over there apparently, I've got three minutes.
Yeah, this computer's frozen.
Unplug it, restart it.
Yeah, we could do that, but I mean, I've got to take that. You can take it for a whole...
I'm just turning it off.
Yes, yes, you did. All right.
Oh, I just reboot it.
Sure, but in the meantime, we could still continue to have a meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Do a lot of...
Okay, how do I take that?
You're gonna have to listen to the audio.
Let me get a...
Let me get another.
Sorry.
I know. No, just listen to the audio when it's over, where we picked up, where we left off.
All right, hello, hello, how's the audio?
It takes like three times as long as it does.
I know it does.
Good, all right, thanks.
Hold on, give me a minute.
All right, now, our audio, let's go.
Hopefully that's where we... Lost on number three, not at number two.
Yeah, but in that case, I'll still, I'll still have Austin.
Yeah.
I know, because you asked them if they had any questions, but I think they were, they were still...
Yeah, I think they were still frozen. They were frozen when you asked...
About the planting?
Oh, oh, that's why they weren't properly excited.
Yeah.
Oh, we can see about, because you did that to there.
Yeah.
Look at you, aren't you fancy? What if I try this back on?
You say, "Yeah," okay.
I guess we get asked the last thing.
Yeah. What was the last thing you guys heard? Dan, Sherry?
Plantings were under budget, which was good. And instead of like we got two of them, two roundabouts, which is great.
Okay.
You got the important parts. Good job.
Yeah, and there wasn't any, so we ready to go?
There was no action.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, that was basically the point about the roundabout, so I think we're good there. And we're moving on to item number three in unfinished business, which Christina had requested that we kind of bring on the agenda, which is a discussion of park fees. And it kind of relates to a separate idea that she had brought about letterboxing and, you know, the opportunity to draw people to the park through this almost kind of a game, like a treasure hunt or, you know, similar type thing.
It's like an outdoor scavenger hunt.
Yeah, like an outdoor scavenger hunt.
I guess all of them do.
I provided, I was providing a little bit of background on park fees, which is, you know, a lot of that is, in the end, really determined by council, and it's kind of ebbed and flowed over the years as to different folks on council and their beliefs in, you know, should we be charging daily park fees? Of course, we have things like barn rent... Of course, we have things like barn rentals, all of those other things. But as far as just visiting the park, whether there should be park, essentially it's parking fees. Because it more has to do with the car itself. And whether that should be just provided to people within the village of Marvin, who are the taxpayers that support it, or whether it should be more considered like a public park, where, you know, given the way that Marvin is kind of constructed now, we've got a lot of people that are in our community that either might just be right in Weddington on the other side or they're in Union County but not in Marvin. Some people don't even know if they're in Marvin or they're not, you know, other than where they pay their taxes to.
Some people still don't know.
Yeah, so, you know, the background on it, you know, over the years has been that because the village of Marvin, town folk are the ones that bought the park and, you know, have improved it, maintain it, that that we should choose, that we should charge park fees if somebody comes daily or they can buy an annual or things like that. So I I think it was just, you know, the consideration, like if we were to do a letterboxing thing, you know, does that mean that people that would come to visit the park for that would then have to pay a daily parking fee and stuff? And and, you know, I'll turn it over to Christina. I was just trying to give kind of the background and and what our discussion might be about it now, get some of the feelings from from us. And then if we think it should be one way or the other, then we would potentially make, you know, a request to council for them to consider it. And there's a number of new people on council this year. So there may or may not be different, you know, thoughts on their side about it as well.
Yeah, so my, the big picture thought is how much revenue do we get from park fees? Parking fees, to your point. How much revenue do we get annually? How much trouble is it to get them? Is it worth it, you know? The cost of management analysis there, and I don't mean a detailed one. It's pretty easy to figure out. And then is that what we want to do moving forward? Partly because of its location, I'm pointing to a map over here. Partly because of its location and partly just maybe out of a philosophical perspective of not charging for public, sort of public state.
Yeah.
Then one, one more requirement of discussion and that to me, anyway.
Yeah, and, you know, I I'd like to, you know, maybe let some of the new folks on the board kind of, you know, get some of your input on that. Don't know if you even knew, you know, up to this point.
What's the answer to the leading question, the revenue thing?
Yeah.
What's the answer on revenue?
Yeah, do we have an idea?
Don't worry, I'm trying to find.
He's trying to try.
He's looking for it now. He's looking for it now, so it might take him a couple of minutes. But any, you know, thoughts or impressions before we we even know that?
I'll just say, by the way, it's my impression that the majority of our parking fees are, the majority of our parking is the rentals and the professional access fees.
And that, and that I wouldn't change. I mean, I'm not proposing that I want to change that.
You just buy the parking for like nine or 10.
The majority of the fees are coming from rentals and professional photo passes.
So they allow photographers to buy, or they request that photographers buy a, is that $100 or something?
We have a daily pass and a annual pass. The daily's 20, the annual is 100, I think.
Something like that. So they can come in and take photographs within the park? So they can stage some of their photography sessions in the park? And I often people do it in the gardens, actually.
Does that sound right here?
So in my opinion.
Go ahead, Dan.
My opinion is that it's probably to police that. It confused me and my family, and if you were here, and you kind of feel unwelcome. And you're trying to figure, you're trying to do the right thing, but it's really hard to figure out what you're doing. Again, the first time you go, you don't really know how to address it. It's not a good feeling, not a welcome feeling to go to the park where you're not sure if you're allowed to be there or how you can. And you want to participate, but you're not quite sure how to make sure you're doing the right thing. So generally, I would say, you know, I feel like if we ask for donations for people to travel to the park, my guess is we'll get more donations that way than if we have to police this thing and spend time and effort on, you know, monitoring, drawing a sticker. Like the soccer shots thing on the weekend. Does everybody from from Marvin, does everybody pay that fee? Are you gonna tell, and they can't go play soccer shots? Because you're gonna go yell at all the parents of the two-year-olds that are trying to scramble around and corral those kids? And they, you know, hey, you don't have your parking fee, you gotta pay. It seems like there's a lot of hassle.
Yeah, I don't know that we do it when there's an actual event or something. Or, yeah.
They're rearranging over there.
Yeah, we're changing.
Yeah, no, you're good. You can keep talking as long as it's not.
Just don't touch something.
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so obviously, like you said, the enforcement is, can be a challenge. I can tell you from a staff standpoint, what we do is we use it as a deterrent for people who are looking to use the park for reasons that they shouldn't be. If if we encounter a mother and two children who don't have a parking pass.
That makes sense.
We're not looking to run them off. We're looking to inform them about the parking pass policy. If we encounter someone who's looking for a secluded area to partake in recreational medicines, then then we're gonna ask them to leave the park for multiple reasons. But even just the suspicion is that they don't have a parking pass. And and that usually sends a clear message. So when there's an event, when there's a rental, we don't, we don't look to enforce on every car. We know that soccer shots is gonna be there and that there's gonna be 10 to 12 families in the front lot. And we know that if there's a barn rental, you know, of 25 people, that there's gonna be 12 to 15 cars in the back lot. And so we know, you know, all of the things that are going on. The professional pass policy does bring in a good bit of revenue. Can't find the form right now, but that's, you know, we're the cheapest professional pass in the area. Mecklenburg County is gonna charge you 65 to 75 an hour to use their parks to take photos. We're 100 for the year. But it's not just for photography, it's for anybody using the park for profit. So soccer shots, people doing dog training, exercise classes, photographers, they all have to have a professional pass to use our park for profit. Otherwise, we're just doing friendly reminders about our parking passes, you know, for for the typical patron walking their dog or playing with their kids.
And I would say that the enforcement has gotten much, much friendlier in the past, recently than it has been in the past.
The enforcement has gotten much friendlier. It may not be as often because we've taken on other duties in-house. But my policy is to.
How is it enforced?
How is it enforced?
Yeah, that's what Sherry's.
Oh, yeah. Talking, conversations. We see a car pull in that doesn't have a parking pass on it. Just approach that person, introduce myself and let them know about the parking pass policy. We've got forms that we'll sometimes leave on their windshield if we can't find them. Or if we can't, you know, if we can't find them, then we'll hand it to them, instruct them. We've, I can't think of anybody who's been combative or opposed in any aggressive way. Most people are just uninformed and they're like, oh, I'd be glad to get a pass. You know, this is a beautiful park. Absolutely, I pay $50 a year to come out here.
So are are you or somebody there at the park staff during park hours opening every day? Or is it just random, you know, quote-unquote enforcement?
Random. So we have currently four people on staff. I'm primarily over here now. So I've got a guy that's at the park scheduled for 30 hours. And then I have two employees who share 20 hours. So that's that's 50 hours, but the park is open currently 84 hours a week. So we can't be there every minute of the day. That would be ideal. But a lot of times, we would just be sitting there watching the grass grow because there are times when people just aren't at the park.
Right, of course. I mean, you know, that's my, my concern is, you know, when does collecting or enforcing something less than, costing too much? And like I asked before, I was talking to Dan when you guys were off. He said that the the roundabouts were done. But like I was asking questions like, well, what kind of grass is gonna be put in there? Is it, you know, arena grass where it doesn't require watering? Like, I'm always thinking about long-term, what are the expenses? So the idea of, you know, charging park pass, that might be good. But if it's costing the village money to staff a person there, you know, is it cost beneficial?
There's nobody, there's nobody there that's just checking passes. They're there doing other things.
Yeah, I think they're scheduled more around the work that needs to be done.
Yes, and.
Than having somebody there, you know, because early on, you know, we we really only had maybe one or two people at the park throughout the whole week. So there were a lot more open hours a few years ago. Whereas now, you know, there's a lot more things to be done at the park and taking on responsibilities for the other trails and things like that. Those employees are more scheduled for for things other than just.
Checking the parking pass.
Taking the park, yeah.
When I first started.
What's, what's your opinion?
Give me, hold on one second. I think I know what you're gonna ask.
Go ahead.
So when I first started in January of 2017 in this role, it was my goal to have park presence every second the park was open. And I quickly learned that that just wasn't possible. Because, Sherry, are you having trouble hearing me? Okay.
I think the farther you are away from the speaker, it kind of cuts out, so I'm just listening in.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would love to have somebody at the park as much as possible, if not all the time. But I've quickly learned that that's just not practical in in reality. People have, I give my guys flexible schedules. We have to work around the weather.
Yeah.
Events at the park. And then, like John said, not everything is at the park. We're on the trails, on the greenway. We're fixing stuff here at Town Hall. We're going to get supplies. So we try to be there during the busiest times that we can. And then we just try to have eyes in the back of our head, you know, if we're out working. And and just, I tell them to always know who's in the park.
And and we do also have some degree of strategic video monitoring that that we installed early on. And I'm assuming that's still.
We can't say that in public.
Oh.
I'm just kidding.
Okay.
Dan, what was your question? I think I know what you were gonna ask.
Derek, what's your opinion? Do you, do you see that as a useful tool then for you? I guess my, generally, I don't, I like the idea of just helping out the people. But if it's a useful tool for you as an enforcement, to be able to enforce certain activities like recreation, seeing somebody that's getting recreational drugs, whatever. It's a, if it's a useful tool to you to have that parking pass in place, then that's another thing too that needs to be considered. To you, what's your opinion? Um, it, as the person that's in charge of running the park, do you see it as a one better place? Do you have that tool? Or does it not impact you one way or the other that much?
I have mixed feelings. I'm a resident and an employee, so I try to remain neutral. It is, it can be useful. I will say that. It can be useful.
But how often does that happen? That you need to kick somebody out of the park and you use a parking fee to do that? A parking sticker, whatever you call it. Just a general idea.
It, it's hard to say. It it varies on how much you want to look for.
Yeah.
Right?
So I I'm struggling with the inconsistency of it. And you can't be there every hour that it's open. You've got other things to do. It's certainly not top of your list, right? It worries me that now, this wasn't even in my mind when I started thinking about this, that we're going to, I hate to use the word profile somebody, or they're gonna perceive that we've profiled them and because of some parking sticker issue. I guess my opinion would be that it, to Dan's point, that it is not welcoming at all. The first time I found the park finally, I think I lived here a year before I figured out my way. But that sign there, I'm like, just exactly what Dan said. What am I supposed to do? How am I supposed to do this? And and it did not seem like this was a very friendly place to be. It seemed snooty and kind of not nice. I mean, there's just no way around it. I get all the other fees that you're talking about. That makes sense. People are getting something for that. But for me to be able to park my car and go weed the garden, and I gotta have a parking sticker? I mean, it just.
Yeah, so this is, this is not the first time that this has come up.
Oh, I'm sure.
So let me, before we hijack the meeting, let me suggest, if you have questions about the fees, how we enforce it, et cetera, reach out to me individually, let's have a conversation. And then you guys have conversations. And if you want to put it back on your agenda as a formality and then take it to council. Because ultimately, council makes that decision to set the fees, whether they exist or not and what their prices are.
And can we calm down the amount?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd make a huge difference, I think.
Yeah, I had it pulled up yesterday. I apologize. I can't find the file. The clerk recently arranged everything. No, I'm just kidding.
There was a town, you know, we came from New York and there was a town park that was on the water. And what they did was they had a resident fee and the residents paid, you know, a yearly fee to be able to use it. There was a playground there, there was beach access. There was baseball courts. I'm just trying to think the different things. There was also, there was tennis courts and things like that. So they had it for town, village members, they had a town fee. Now, they staffed it, so there was somebody there. They checked passes, so you paid, it was minimal, like $150 a year. You had access to the beach, you had access to the, it was amazing, kids park, tennis courts. You had to reserve them ahead of time. But then non-residents could also use it, but the fees were significantly more. So let's say for a resident family, it was $150. For non-residents, it was $50. And then for residents, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not saying that this, I'm just, you know, throwing up. And then for residents, parking was free. For a non-resident, they had to pay for parking. So the idea was to really make it mostly for residents because the fees were so minimum, it was $150 for an entire family and you didn't have to pay for parking. And what I noticed, like I lived in more of a city. This was the next town over, so they wanted to keep it more town-like. And and having those higher fees for outside residents did really keep a lot of those non-residents out because they didn't want to spend money. So, but the problem is the logistics of enforcing it. How do you do it? Do you put something, a machine there that can scan? If you're a resident, you have a pass? I don't know. You know, then you get into spending money because you don't want to staff it because then you have to pay somebody to staff it. So I'm just putting the information out there for us all to think about and process. They also had, for example, they would bring in private companies. There was a company that would do lessons. And they paid the village access to the beach. It was a small group, like, you know, on a Saturday morning, they would go out. And and they were generating revenue from these kind of services that they were allowing in the park. So that was even more revenue that was generated. And and it was a great thing. A lot of residents had their kids signed up for kayak lessons on Saturday mornings. Tennis lessons, they would have a, like a tennis, or go there and give tennis lessons to use the town tennis courts and they were getting revenue from that. So just some thoughts.
Yeah. And and I think many of those things are kind of what, you know, we we do currently. You know, like the sports shots and some of those. I I think probably the primary difference from what you were talking about is that the residents themselves. is that the residents themselves don't pay really any fee whatsoever. They're entitled to the two, um, passes.
Yeah.
And, and it's really just the non-residents that, that we're asking the nominal fees of. And, and it really comes down to the question because I think everybody sees all those other barn rental fees, you know, group rental fees, professional fees. I, I, I think by and large, everybody agrees that we need those. It's more just the, the, the day-to-day public access and, and whether that makes sense and, and whatever.
Yeah, that's correct.
What are your thoughts on? So what are your thoughts on, I know it's a quote-unquote Marvin Park, but we really are like kind of this little community of Weddington, Waxall, Marvin, like opening it up to some of those other residents just to get exposure and feel like we're all neighbors.
I, I think that, I, I think that would more open the can of worms. Then it becomes even more of a, well, which municipality are you in and out? And I, I would think that would start to track even harder. Either you're, either you're allowing public access or you're doing some sort of non-resident fee, you know? I think if we start to kind of get into larger Waxall, Weddington, it might be nice, but I think that would be accomplished just by having no fee public access.
No parking fee. Well, they're talking about a parking fee, right?
Yeah.
That's the only feeder it is, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that we're talking.
I think Derek.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
There's, there's just a parking fee that really is on the table. The rest of those, and, and that's a non-Marvin resident parking fee.
Yeah, we have resident and non-resident fees for those other things.
Right.
Which I, which I think makes sense too.
Right, 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 right.
But it's really the parking fee, you know, for this.
And how do we collect? I mean.
Well, exactly.
I think Derek had a good suggestion, which we might need to put this on the next.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know what the, what everybody's schedule is, but we might need to get this in a different format.
Yeah.
We just, and we need the data. I mean, and he'll get it to us. And then we'll know how, how much we're really collecting of parking fees. And then we'll have better information.
And Todd, you guys called, you guys can call Derek individually and get some more clarification on some of these questions that you guys have in order to then have a better conversation about it at the next meeting or whenever you guys want to put it back on your agenda.
Yeah, and one thing for, for you folks that are new, um, you can actually call me or call Christina individually to discuss items or each other. It's just you can't talk to or email, uh, you know, any more than three of us at a given time.
Any more than two.
Because you don't want to create a. Any more than two. That's what, sorry, that's what I meant. Um, so, um, just wanted to make sure that you knew and understand that, that we just can't, you know, constitute a quorum at any given point. But we can kind of bounce ideas off each other as well as staff.
And you should.
Yeah, and, and, and that's an important part of the process. All right, we good for this for now and, and with the understanding that we will kind of, you know, discuss amongst ourselves and staff.
And I'll put it on the agenda for next month.
Thank you.
Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, moving out to the next item, which is new business items. First one, Austin, is adoption of 2021 Parks, Rec and Greenway Board Meeting Schedule.
Yes, this was in your packet, Rohit's bringing it up. Uh, this is, this is a proposed meeting schedule for next year. Same conventions as previous. It's the first Tuesday of every month.
Don't we usually move the July one?
Hmm?
Don't we usually move the July one?
Because of, uh, yeah.
Okay, we can move that. So.
I just felt like we've usually kind of moved it around so that it's not right on the fourth. Can you not see that far away?
No, there's a glare on it. There's a glare from right there.
Yeah, and, and, um.
It's old.
Just so you know, we've kind of come to the, to the morning meetings as being something convenient. And it also, I think, helps, uh, the, uh, the town, the staff and stuff, uh, to be able to have them during the day in the mornings.
I really enjoy it.
Um, but, um, for, for the new folks on there, are morning meetings generally okay? I assume that you kind of knew that when you came on the board. But, um, you know, what's your feedback, morning and evenings?
Morning's fine, um, for me. Um, I mean, nobody's gonna, I don't expect anybody to change it. Anything for me, nine o'clock's just a little, I was a little late because I was getting breakfast ready for kids who are, you know, doing virtual and stuff like that. But that's probably not going to be forever anyway. So I apologize, I was a little late and then I had some trouble getting on this morning.
No worries.
That's unfortunately normal.
So do you guys want to move that July 6th to the next week or?
Yeah, we push that July 6th day up to the next week.
You also need to look at April 6th. That's smacked down in the middle of spring break week.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
So April and July. To move it, so if you move it one week forward, you'll be on the same day as a council meeting, but you'll be in the morning.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Now, Kim, that's a lot of meeting for you.
It's a lot of meeting for me. I might want to stay here all day. I'll get a cot in the back.
Hey, you come off us, you got, I don't care.
Dan, any feedback from you though as well?
So we're doing the, we're doing.
Yeah, I can, I can make work, anything work.
Okay.
So we're moving April 6th to the 14th and.
No, to the 13th.
Oh, no, it's Monday. No, it's 2020. I'm looking at 2020, I'm crazy.
Please don't redo 2020.
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be April 13th and then it would be July 13th.
Awesome, okay. So this, so if that, if that all sounds good to you, uh, you are going to take it. So you just need to adopt it as amended.
All right, uh, do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the 2021 Parks, Rec and Recreation and Greenway Boards Meeting Schedule as it's been amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the next is, uh, Rohit with a discussion of CRTPO grant funding.
Okay, great. Give me one second to close this off.
Hey, also, we send that to Bob, just so he knows.
Yes, I'll let him know. Send to Bob. Actually, I'm gonna resend it out to everybody anyway as it's changed, so.
Oh, shoot, I also have to pull up my materials. I had it pulled up on the other computer. Um, okay, so, uh, but I'll try to talk and walk at the same time.
Well, we've got it in our packet, if that helps.
Oh, there's one more thing. There's one more doc. Actually, I have it printed out, but, uh, I also need to pull it up for the people online.
And I'll leave a copy of that in.
Yeah, I did a breakdown of, uh, so you have a map in the agenda, which is a breakdown of what I think, uh, the portions of Marvin Loop that we could get developers to build versus what we would probably have to build as a, as a government, which I say as a government being, uh, you know, us, the county, CRTPO and federal, um, public in general. Um, and, uh, so the mileage we got from the destination by design, um, I think the reason why the mileage came a little low is because they did not anticipate our interest of building on a sidewalk on both sides of Newtown Road. Um, so I did have a much higher mileage. And so, you know, if I'm doing a mile, uh, cost per mile, I can't walk and talk. Um, give me one second.
Rohit is malfunctioning before our very eyes.
At le, at least you can admit that you can't do two at once.
That is the first step.
I'm gonna say there's a problem.
Yeah. Open the.
Excuse me. That was funny, Rohit.
Oh. Um, all right, I have it open on my desktop. Be right back.
Be right back.
Kim, you want to do the Japanese music?
Yeah. No.
No.
All right, so CRTPO, uh, is re, uh, doing this grant application. You just, uh, kind of tell them how much the project you think will cost and how much money you're asking them for. They require a minimum of 20% match. Uh, I'm gonna bring it up to council next week, uh, to ask them, you know, the more you match, the more points you get. So I'm gonna ask them, you know, what they're willing to match. Um, but this is basically the scope of what I would request, uh, from CRTPO. Um, I would tell, I would tell them in the application, um, you know, we're looking into doing a village center. It's a downtown district. That would make this a very competitive and regionally impactful project for the, the regional transportation organization to consider. Um, and that said, um, I also don't think that we would be responsible for the entire, um, loop because in the, this kind of public-private, um, relationship that we'd have with these property owners here, uh, we would ask them to build a sidewalk in front of their, uh, property most likely. Um, but that said, uh, I did come out, even the public section was, uh, a little over two miles. So that's $2.2 million on its own. So if we match 20, 25%, we'd still be asking, uh, CRTPO for like 1.5, 1.7 maybe. Um, but, uh, just, uh, this is kind of more so an update to tell you guys that we are working on the application. Dan, uh, has been really helpful in, uh, some of the questions. But, uh, since we are at the 0 to 10% planning stage, uh, they did tell us that, uh, there are a lot of questions that are kind of quantitative that we can just use our discretion on. So I think we'll be all right. And that they'll help us, you know, get through some of the questions if we submit an application and their, the answer is not exactly what they expected or something.
Are we asking in red?
Yeah, so what, the red part of this map is what, um, the scope of, the, the whole red and blue is the scope of what, uh, would constitute the Marvin Loop and, uh, connections to.
The completion of the Marvin.
Yeah, yeah, the completion of Marvin Loop and the connections to Charlotte and to Waxall, which again is important for CRTPO because they're a regional transportation organization. So the connection to both, between internally and also to the neighboring, um, towns is important to them if we're gonna ask them for money. But they will give us a lot of money. So it's really important that we, um, apply for this grant.
We lack a lot of money for trails.
Yeah.
So, okay, so the red is what we're asking for them. The blue is what you are assuming builders, developers will do. In this red, in this cost projection here, is that just the physical build cost? Or does that include easements?
It includes everything.
Requirement?
Yeah.
All that stuff.
Yeah.
Great.
And, and the one thing that I would note is that a large portion, mostly, especially the red, is along public roads, which would necessarily have to be in NC DOT right-of-way.
Right.
And typically tends to be the most expensive, you know, um, type of trails, greenways that, that we build. Because of the additional NC DOT requirements and stuff.
Right, right. So this is getting, uh, $200 per linear foot. Uh, Derek will tell us that, you know, the Tullamore Trail, we get for a lot less. Um, but, uh, this is the estimation that Destination by Design used and it's in our Parks and Greenways master plan. So we're going off of that. That's what we're gonna tell CRTPO. We got a professional to do a cost estimation.
Great.
And that, uh, boosts our application.
Yeah.
Um, but I still, I mean, it could be less, it could be more. But the, the moral of the story is we ask CRTPO for a certain amount of money.
One, one question I'm wondering, the, the little red box, which is like, it might be near Firethorn, Innisbrook.
Right. It's two, this and, uh, the Marvin Creek area, it's kind of two alternatives for crossings. I drew this back in March.
One.
Yeah, yeah, they're alternatives. We're not gonna try to put, uh, crosswalks on both sides of the road. It's just, it's definitely just dependent on where we get the crossing. And Marvin Creek, it is more likely that we will end up putting the, the crosswalk at, uh, um, the Marvin Creek intersection. Um, so I redrew that. And then at Innisbrook, it's either we cross at the intersection or we cross right where Wood Cliff sidewalks end and then, uh, cross over to kind of the top of Innisbrook's, uh, HOA property. Depending, it just depends on, you know, final engineering, but we're only gonna do one of the two.
Thanks for asking that.
Yeah.
I didn't know I had a question, but I did.
Okay. Um, so what, what are you asking us about this? Is just kind of more informative of what we're doing as part of this current process?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's more informative. Um, it's also, um, just, also just to say, you know, Dan is really doing a great job. He has an engineering firm and he's helping us answer, uh, some of the questions. And, uh, the due date for this application is October 16th and I'm on track to submit it by then.
Okay.
Great job. Thanks for your help, Dan.
The scope, yeah.
Well, that's great.
Okay.
Because I can build, we're gonna walk.
Yeah. Um, I guess the only, the only drawback is if we apply for this now, the funding would be released in '24, '25. So it's, and.
You're gonna have to make my own go path.
It's, it's a step forward.
Yeah, it is a step forward.
You're moving it in the ball in the right direction.
Right. And this, this is another, another drawback is that this, uh, money is reimbursable. So we would have to pay for it in some way. And then CRTPO will reimburse us after we give them the receipts.
So then we could build it before '24, '25.
Yeah, yeah. And then take a, well, knowing well before then that we would be awarded.
Right.
We could take a construction loan of some type, build it. I mean, as a government, we can get very low interest rates and then they'd reimburse us.
Did, did they give you a timeline on when they would be awarding?
They're looking at fiscal year '24, '25.
No, like telling us that we would.
Oh, oh, that should be much sooner, like within the year of '21.
Oh, then that's way better, that's way better.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
One question I have, that stretch of Newtown Road where it doesn't follow the road, but really goes kind of deep through the woods there. Um, i- is that just the bottom side of a pretty large lot there?
Yeah, yeah, so what.
That we expect might be developed.
Right, right.
That's the Odell property.
Yeah, so one, one of the things that came out of the public input for Parks and Greenways is this curve here and another curve at, down in Waxall Marvin Road near Providence Estates. They seem to be too dangerous to support, uh, trail alongside the roads.
Oh, yes.
Right. So, um, what we want to consider is not even five or 15 feet or 20 feet. There's no real distance just right off the road that would be safe. So to put it so far off the road that you're not even like next to the road anymore, just around that curve and the other curve, um, and that is reflected in the scope.
No, is that all of Odell's or does that run?
That's, that runs us to Previs's as well. And this is again, we're submitting this whole application to CRTPO assuming a village center happens. Because, I mean, to be realistic, if a village center doesn't happen, this is not gonna be awarded to us.
Right.
Um, so we assume the village center happens in this, in the, in the scope So we assume the village center happens in this, in the, in the scope that we are kind of setting out and, and, and that's, that those properties that would be in the district, then we would ask them to build a trailer in this way.
There's just two quick things. I think we should really appreciate what Ruay and Derek as well have been working on this and getting this moving forward because, you know, we asked some questions yesterday on a call with the, the funding folks. It is a big federal program essentially that distributed out since the case. The, the schedule is kind of an issue for us in terms of the money doesn't come until later, but there's, there's zero, there, I was a little concerned we didn't have enough info to really compete for this, but I have zero concern with that now. So I think we should definitely be applying and it's a good step forward if we don't. Hope money is late, later than we want. That's not a big deal in the end. I think there's ways to do it in the events, but you have to, you've got to do pieces and count that towards your match. So that's all good. The other thing this gets us is it gets us kind of an official process for working, we have to do it also separately from this, but generally, we're going to need to be getting in front of NC DOT and getting approvals. It's part of all this process. So getting in the queue to work with these folks is a good thing. So I think this is a great, just two quick, I think I talked about this offline, but one, I think we need to make sure we have, we can show we have a plan to get the full connection or some of the benefits, like so ancillary things that don't, we don't have to have in the budget and on in the application to get the benefits we're claiming. If we're not connecting to things that get us benefits from pedestrian, you know, reducing true vehicle traffic, we could maybe lump them up for now. It's trying to get in the best, what makes sense for budget.
Right.
Do we want, do you think there's any issue with showing that we're relying on developers to build stuff? Or should we be showing like a comprehensive thing we can afford to do ourselves or do you think that doesn't matter this time?
I mean, I think it's important to show that we expect these developers to build their own sidewalk and we can explain the village center project in the application. But yeah, if we just showed what we were going to propose building, then there would be gaps, so that wouldn't make sense.
Not until we've-
Yeah.
Okay. And then, well, yeah, I was wondering if we should show, just show us doing it and not paying the cost, but be planning on developers later, but show us doing it so we, there's no outside party. Normally that these things, they usually want you to have commitment letters from people that are maybe relying on doing things. And so if we just excluded them and just did like the, the, along Newtown Road and just said, we're, it's all red.
So then you're upping the cost in our-
Yeah, and so a complete, complete project with no outside, you know, outside funding, essentially.
Although, do we have to show some sort of financial picture that that would affect? You know, because it's much different if we're then lumping the developer costs into our bigger number. Are they going to drill down on that and say, well, are you guys really planning to be able to spend that amount of money? We may be able to handle this, but when you delineate it out, developer versus village. But if you put it all into one bucket, if they, if they're looking at it from a financial perspective, well, where's your plan to be able to do that from a, from a financial perspective?
Well, and if we put it all in one bucket?
Yeah, obviously being, if you just connected the orange or red lines along Newtown and Marvin there, where it's developer built, and got rid of this stuff on the other side of the street or even behind in there, for now, they don't, I mean, that's sort of connecting all the things you want to connect with, with probably less, less distance in total. You know what I mean? They don't even have to show the developer piece except for as like future potential kind of thing.
I think that could simplify it a lot to just, let's see if I can-
Increases the questions.
Yeah, I could just-
So like all that behind Village Hall as well?
Yeah, so to just eliminate that.
You're going to want that going that way.
Yeah, and that-
Yeah. Okay, so.
So we still have it on our plans with the expectation that it could be developers, but it kind of focuses them more to that connectivity and-
Yeah, stop there because don't you want to go down?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then I would just pick, pick one of these with the squares, with the two squares, just pick one of those and just so it's not as confusing. We keep this for us, but whatever you're submitting.
Yeah, I see you.
And then just kind of reevaluate the footage, et cetera.
Erase that. Yeah.
And then the only other thing was, I just had a question and I should know how this works, but I don't. So the trails and the preserve that kind of already essentially go into that backside of that circle, public building, where we, the words, public building? It kind of runs where that developer build is, but it goes, I think it goes into, wait, is it normally built?
Yes, 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 yes. This, this portion here is already built and it wasn't when I made this map back in March.
Wow. Oh, that's, that's this back here.
Yeah, yeah.
That's back behind us.
Yep.
So you're assuming that they're going to build something around the pond to kind of-
Yeah, yeah, to, to connect it.
Yeah, take all, yeah, definitely get rid of all that.
Sure. That makes sense.
Very, very, Derek.
Okay. Great work on that, Dan and staff.
Thank you.
It looks good, but I, but I do agree, I think streamlining it down to the, for the submission perspective is, makes sense.
All right. I've-
When you're going for these grants, they want you to be focused.
Yep, yep. Gotcha. All right. That's all I have for that. Hopefully the next month I'll have an update that says, you know, we applied for the grant and I'll let you know what happens in the next coming year about it.
All right. The next I know Derek, if Derek's here, is tree lighting, planning discussion. And, you know, we're here in October and I'll turn it over to Derek in a minute, but we've traditionally had, I think it's the second Saturday.
10th of the day of December 12?
Yeah, that sounds right, December 12.
At four is what I have on my calendar that we picked, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's right.
I have five, but, but I could have been guessing.
Okay. And, and a lot of times we do it not to be in conflict with Waxall when they do theirs as well.
I think they do theirs on the first Saturday, don't they?
Yeah, I think they do and that's why we picked the second. Because we also share the same Santa typically.
There's only one.
But I, you know, I guess the time is starting to think about it now. And again, the good news is, you know, we've got another two months for COVID-19 restrictions to further continue to clarify themselves, which, whichever way things go. I know, you know, we started to make some, some little changes last year to it and, you know, we've had some discussions over the last 10 months on, on maybe some other ideas. I, I think as always, when, when we talk about that event, it has traditionally, over the many years, been one of our biggest events in many years. Typically, some of the situations we have is managing traffic and parking because we do get so many things, so many folks. I do think that the best way that we typically advertise that event out is when we do a good job informing families through the elementary schools. So I think that's, you know, always a, a focus in terms of, you know, how we get the message to the community. But Derek, just starting to talk about the Christmas event and tree lighting and, you know, what some of your thoughts are on that. I just kind of discussed that we've had, you know, some different ideas that we've bounced around in the format and things like that and, you know, as well as necessarily waiting to figure out how things go with COVID-19 and stuff.
Yeah, so I think obviously we'll have to make everything sort of tentative and if available, my goal the last, well, in response to the declining attendance the last couple of years is to really engage the elementary school families. And I've spoken with the principal at Marvin Elementary and he's very supportive. So he's prepared to help me engage that, possibly through like the art classes there. We've got to have a follow-up meeting and just kind of set some plans for how to approach that. But like I say, he's supportive. I mean, that's what, 500 families? So I mean, you know, we get 10, 20% of those people engaged. That, that would really boost our attendance. I was looking at outsourcing the coffee and desserts this year, just as a preparation for COVID considerations, you know, people not wanting other people touching their food and prep, prep stuff. So I've got a couple different coffee trucks, food trucks to speak with and got to have a follow-up conversation with Publix. Publix really wants to be involved, but they've suspended all in-person, in-person volunteering at events through January. So I thought about just kind of tweaking the event, maybe having more vendors per se, not selling stuff, but people that use the park on a regular basis to, as a way, just kind of give back, having a craft or something for the kids to do or just a way to pick up a candy cane or Hershey Kiss or something. And kind of set it more, set up more of like a holiday market, but still have small breaks where the dance team or the choir group or the band from the, the schools can do a small performance, but make it a little more of a mingling and interaction time rather than having the whole thing sort of booked up for performances. So I just wanted to get you guys' thoughts on it and-
So we normally have, we like, not, not necessarily in this order, I'm just going running down what we normally have and do. We have the tree lighting, we have Santa there. We have Santa talking to the kids and getting kids' lists, right?
Yeah, I mean, that was-
Which I'm thinking we're not going to be able to do.
Yeah, that, that really hit me the other week when Santa reached out to me and, and asked about the event. I'm like, we can't have kids sitting on Santa's lap. You know, I mean, what is, what is Santa going to look like with a mask on? You know, and most people aren't even going to want that.
No.
Even if they are, so, so I think unfortunately, I don't know that we have a Santa unless it's strategic and, you know, a drive-by wave or something where-
We're going to get the fire department, like Santa on the fire truck or, I don't know.
Where he throws out some candy or something.
But we've got the tree lighting, we've got Santa. We usually do hot chocolate and cookies.
Hot chocolate and coffee for drinks and cookies and pastries.
And then we've had a snow machine, we've had the ice sculpture. So I'm just, I'm just trying to think like if we have all, like if we look at normal, like what we normally have, what can't we do? Let's just assume, we'll be bad and assume, that there's still going to be COVID restrictions in place. Now, to what degree, we don't know, but let's just assume that. So no Santa's sitting on laps, we're not handing out coffee, hot chocolate, cookies. We can still do the snow machine, still do the ice sculpture, still light the tree. I'm just even wondering like, are people going to be able to sing, dance, play with masks on? I just, I don't know.
The dancing thing, that dance studio that we've always had there in the past has dissolved through COVID, so that's not available.
Somebody reached out to the mayor about wanting to, an opportunity to be involved. So I don't know if it was that studio or a different one.
There might be a new person taking over a lot of that and, and I know who that person is. I can reach out to them, but I know that Gift of Dance who used to do it and then they were Trinity, they're, they're not the same organization anymore. I would really probably recommend, you know, if we could get middle school, high school choir, I, I think I can reach out to both of them to see if they're interested.
Are they going to be singing, I mean, with a mask on? Because I'm sure they're not going to be singing without one on.
Well, I, I mean-
I, I just don't know, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, if these guys are practicing as a group together, you know, whether it's the high school or churches, a lot of them, they're like Minority does dance thing.
If they're doing their normal thing, I think they will be able to.
But are they doing their normal thing?
That's what I don't know. I'll reach out to, to, to them because I know them both. Go, go ahead.
I'm leaving the churches.
Sherry, are you saying this, these schools are practicing together now currently?
Well, like Minority does dance and her group of kids dance together.
Dance, a little difference in singing, sure.
It's that specific group. I would, I'd look into the school thing and find out about choir or dance. I know band, band has been practicing, so, you know, that's something that would be nice too. It's always nice to have live music.
I'll, I'll do this. I'll reach out to the, the choir directors who I know and have worked with in the past for the middle and the high school. And does somebody have a band contact?
I can, I mean, I can call the high school and ask.
You said you'd reach out to choir?
Yeah, I'll reach out to high school choir and middle school choir, just to see if they're doing anything. If they're not doing anything, I, we'll just do music and, you know, but if they are already doing things to, to, to plan some performances, because that's how they support themselves and trips and stuff, that may or may not be happening. If they are doing that, I'm sure they can find a way to socially distance themselves and, and do it there if they're doing it at other places.
I just, I, my fear is that-
If we even have that.
Well, that's, that was what I was going to say. That's my fear, if we're going to get up to the date and we're going to have to cancel it with all of this effort put into it. Not saying we don't, not to plan it, I think we should, but we just need to have lots of contingencies in place if we have to cancel at the last minute.
Maybe have the plans out, at least a month out.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we're, we're two months out now, so it's really only next meeting.
Yeah.
And then we would have that first meeting in December, so there's two meetings after this one, but it, it's going to be tighter.
Yeah.
I was thinking of reaching out to the band that was scheduled to play at National Night Out and see if they could do a, a Christmas sort of ensemble.
That may almost be better than having like, I don't know, having kids coming in. Yeah, I, I don't know. I just, this, this-
You've got four adults.
The one thing that I always thought though about the choir-
It gets the families in.
It brings people with them, you know, because they want to see their kids.
I know. I, I, I hundred percent agree with you. Well, let's find out if they're doing anything.
Yeah.
And if they're doing something, then we can kind of plan around it. If they're not, then we know and we can-
Do you want Derek to reach out to that master?
I would, just find out what their availability is. Information gathering.
Sherry, as you have these conversations or you make phone calls, email me and let me know. Don't, let's don't just wait till the ERG meetings.
Who was she talking to again?
The high school band.
Yeah, she'll reach out to the high school band, but I'll reach out to the choirs.
I'll do that today.
Joe's supposed to be sending-
He's dancing?
One, one of the dance team, dance groups who was interested, was supposed to be contacting me.
Dan, yes.
What about any church choirs?
Again, I think if we have like a choir come in, it should be the kids because it brings the families in. Otherwise, we should just go the band way and like your band way.
Hiring a band?
Yeah.
I didn't hear what she said. Say, I'm sorry, can we say it again?
She was saying that if, if we're going to do music, that we should go with the schools because it, it brings the families in and it's from our community, or we, or we just hire a band per se.
I mean, I'm just thinking, what if the schools aren't doing it, then?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be nice? You know, like there's so many, we're surrounded by so many different churches in our community. I mean, look right where the village center is. I mean, it's a community of churches, it's the South. That's kind of the, the trademark of the South is, I don't know, just, I mean, I think the school is definitely the place to start because like you said, yeah, it does bring people in, but we'll find out, you know? I mean, I'm sure if they're not doing band, they're not doing choir, if they're not doing choir, they're not doing band.
Yeah. I mean, I go to a local church, but from a staff standpoint, I would be fearful of looking like we're promoting one certain church over another from a, a government standpoint.
It's just about music, you know, no singing, prayer.
It's about perception.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
We've even run into some of those things in the past.
Yeah.
With, with, we had a loosely religiously affiliated group at one time and, and, you know, choice of songs was discussed and things like that.
So we'll, we'll either go to school choir or Derek will reach out to the band that was supposed to play at National Night Out and see what they can do.
Yeah. I, I, I think that's probably the safer way to keep it for now without kind of getting involved in, in, in other issues and discussions on such short notice and, and something that we, we're not even sure is going to come off yet or not. I wouldn't want to start talking to churches and they may be, yes, we want to come out, we want to do that. And it might be a lot harder to, to kind of work that and kind of keep focused and flexible, you know, with it being only two months away right now. But so beyond that, the, the lighting and stuff like that, you know, that you've all got pretty much down pat.
Yeah.
You know, for what we've done in the past there.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if anybody had any other ideas or suggestions they wanted to try to implement.
I want to do the snow machine again.
Snow, snow machine will be there.
Ice sculpture.
Ice sculpture.
Bob's going to be manning the ice sculpture. Bob's gonna be manning the ice sculpture, right? We can do that last, last couple of years. Um. Yeah. Oh, we need to nail down time and when we actually want the tree lit. Cause we've had, we've gone back and forth and going at the beginning, doing at the end, doing in the middle.
Yeah, um.
I, I think it still needs to be around.
Four to six, we light it at five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty, yeah.
I'm good with that, we just, we've, we've just gone back and forth and talked about it, like.
Well, and we also had some scheduling issues at different times that.
So four, four to six, light the tree at five thirty.
Yeah.
Do we wanna light the tree earlier so the people that are there can enjoy the tree longer?
Yeah.
Like five?
Have we ever done anything, I mean, I know this COVID. Um, but, you know, I know in our community, the Chamber of Commerce used to, um, financially support. They would have, uh, horse and carriage rides and they would have bells, you know, it's supposed to simulate slave ride. Obviously, it wasn't a slave ride, but, um, you know, there's so many farms around, um, horses. Maybe somebody would wanna do something like that, um, I don't know, just so it's kind of like Christmasy spirit and.
What, what we typically have done is like activity tables, like build your own ornaments, things of that nature, you know, for some of the kids and stuff in the past. Um, we haven't done the horses or, we've done horses and horse rides before at different events, but I never remember it being tied to the Christmas event, um.
What, or do you have a specific vision in mind for that? I'm not opposed to anything.
Yeah.
Where is the actual tree lighting being done?
At the park.
At the park.
At, at the barn.
At the barn.
So, I mean, it could be done, I mean, it, you have the space there, right?
Right, but I'm, like, what, what are you envisioning? Help me under, get a vision like, um, like pony rides?
Just like horse and carriage.
Or like, like a carriage ride around the park?
No, like, so what, what they did, it was, um, you know, a draft horsing team. So it looked like, you know, the Budweiser Clydesdales and they would pull the big wagon and, you know, obviously people will have to have masks on and they do, you know, like.
It's a horse ride, slave ride.
Carriage ride, yeah.
We have to figure out the configuration, one loop around, there's bells on the carriages, you can put lights on the carriages. Um, I mean, they did in our community, they would serve hot cider, obviously, you know, we're limited to that kind of stuff. But it's a draw for the kids, they like the horses, there's probably people in our community or within, you know, this, like, so, so much farmland around, um, just the, uh, you know, Christmas spirit and it's something people can actually do.
I, I could look, I, I could look into that because I know a number of people in the horse community. I, I'm not really that aware of them having the large trailers that they have them trained to bring behind. Um, but, but let me ask some questions and I'll provide some feedback to staff and they can distribute to, to us prior to our next meeting, if, if it looks like something that, that could come together. But I have, uh, a number of contacts with folks with horses.
And I would just think about, like, whatever trail or whatever loop you would do in the park, just remember it's gonna get dark early and where it does not lit.
I, I would say it would really be down the road, kind of down towards the lake and then turn around and come back, yeah.
It's still like dark, yeah. I mean, it gets dark.
It does get dark early, yeah.
We'll just do it for the first hour, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, as we're thinking about it, just let's think logistics, cause it's gonna be dark by five o'clock.
Sure, four to five.
So what time are you thinking about lighting the actual tree?
I think we should light it five, cause then people can enjoy it for another hour.
Yeah, it's not dark enough yet. It's like that.
It's dark at five.
Oh, no, it'll be dark, cause December twenty first is the shortest day of the year.
Yeah, it's maybe at all.
Well, it's, it won't be before December twenty first.
Between five and five fifteen, yeah, depending on light.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Yeah. I felt like we rushed it one year and lit it just a little too soon.
All right.
We are gonna, it is my goal to purchase a very large, uh, live tree this year for the lighting ceremony and set it up outside. We talked about that last year, um, staking it in the ground and having it be outdoors, similar to what Weddington does in front of their town hall.
I love that.
So anybody's eager to help set up a very large tree the week prior, let me know.
Okay, um, any further discussion on the tree lighting? All right, uh, number four, we need Rohit, um, update on Marvin Gardens, Weddington Chase connection.
Okay, um, so in the packet you have, uh, all the documents this time. Um, basically, the, one of the conditions of Marvin Gardens' original approval in twenty sixteen was that they would help fund a sidewalk connection from Weddington Chase, you know, internally into Marvin Gardens. Um, so that is progressing, um.
It looks nice. It looks nice what they've done so far.
Yeah, yeah, um, but, so the Marvin Gardens developer has given us the check, is very detailed in, in what they were supposed to do. They gave us the five thousand dollar check, we're gonna give it to Weddington Chase's HOA and Weddington Chase will build a trail to connect to where it's shown in the packet, um, that, uh, we have a trail. And so there's kind of two facets of this discussion. Um, one of them is just mostly informational, the fact that, uh, Weddington Chase would build a sidewalk that cuts through their little HOA strip and connects to the trail. But the other facet is that we are about to have a one point oh five acre park. They're gonna dedicate that to us, including the trail, is undeveloped.
That's in the, in the front, right, or, yeah, we need to discuss.
Yeah, yeah. Right, so they're gonna build the parking lot and the, the trail. They're also going to realign it as shown, and so when I say.
Which trail is that?
Um, it's a trail that's not built.
Can you take the screen, please?
Yeah, yeah, I, I haven't pulled it up yet, actually, um.
So what, like, building a trail connection?
Uh, yeah, like I said, can't walk and talk, sorry.
A trail connection to Marvin Gardens?
Uh, yeah, so Marvin Gardens and Weddington Chase Trail Connection. Ah, okay, okay. So here we are on Providence Road, just south of Newtown Road, and, uh, Weddington Chase is down at the bottom, that's Woodmont, it's kind of off the screen to the south. But, uh, the two things that's happening in this conversation is, one, the, the Marvin Gardens developers is going to realign the trail from the plan, and I do, I would like your consensus for this. They would realign the trail so that it's got more of a T, so that it actually does directly connect to the, the sidewalk that would then carry you to the, uh, the rest of the development.
Providence.
Yeah, so this, this is Providence.
Entrance to Weddington Chase here?
Uh, let's see, so, oh, shoot, all right, so.
The entrance to Weddington Chase is down.
Is that like down here, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Ah, geez, okay, so, so here's Woodmont.
Okay.
Um, that's Woodmont, I'm just gonna put Woodmont there. And this is Providence Road here, and then I'm just gonna put a P, a big old P there, so that's Providence.
Newtown's up here?
Yeah, Newtown's up there, all the way up there.
Okay, so this is the new light and the new entrance.
Yes, yes. So that, down here is Weddington, uh, Chase, Woodmont, this is Providence Road, and this is Newtown Road, all the way up there. So there's two things going on, like I said, so one thing that's going on is that, um, Weddington Chase would connect, would cut through their own HO, HOA property, so not all the way up to Providence Road, unless they can, I don't know. And then connect up to this trail, so that would be the HOA, the HOA responsibility.
Okay.
The other thing is that Marvin Gardens developer is going to realign, oh, shoot, I erased everything. Um, is going to realign this curved trail so that it actually does connect to the sidewalk. So when the HOA, uh, does build their sidewalk, it's actually a continuous, uh, connection to the sidewalk, the sidewalk that you can then see it goes up to the, the, the Publix.
And then it comes down here to the street and then, but this is like a walking path.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna curve or it's gonna T up and then T over.
The, uh, the revision is the, the red dashed line that they've drawn.
Okay, so they're gonna straight up and then, okay.
The current plan is the curved path, and they're proposing to T it up so that, you know, you can actually walk to the sidewalk and then to the Publix.
Yeah.
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 So I was just gonna get your consensus because this is an amendment to our future trail.
Do we still have this space?
Yeah, so, um, the space, the space here, they've just put a fence, uh, where I've drawn this red line now, I should have drawn it a different color, they put a fence, they did not take any of the trees out, they didn't do any development, they're just gonna build, they build the parking lot, they build the parking lot here, and they're gonna build a trail here and a T as shown. And then they're going to leave it to us, they're gonna dedicate it to us, we're gonna own that property, one point oh five acres, and it's gonna be a park that we then decide whatever we want.
It'll be like a pocket park?
Yeah, yeah, with, with the space, with the space, uh, here.
Okay.
This would be also a dog park.
So that's, that's the second facet of the discussion, what to do with a one acre.
Hold on, let's go back to those, everybody good with the T?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Will it reserve water?
Sorry, yeah, so as Ken said, can we just get a consensus on if everyone is good with the realignment of the trail?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm fine with that.
It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think we actually even had previously, I'd have to look through my papers, um, but, but I think we actually even had some layouts specifically for that one acre that we've already talked and discussed about. It doesn't need to be that, but something to kind of work from, from the start, um.
John, couldn't we say that, or didn't you guys say that you weren't real concerned about that as far as maybe being very much?
Well, a, a lot of it depends on.
I mean, I'm looking at an acre and I'm like, now we could do some fun stuff with that, like, that's a pretty good chunk.
Mm-hmm, I mean, do bear in mind that acre is this outside green line, so the actual, yeah.
It's like three quarters of an acre.
Yeah, yeah, so the actual air, space we have, three quarters of an acre acre, but they are building this parking lot and trail, so they're already building that part, they're just, they're leaving this part here undeveloped.
Yeah, and, and I think to some degree, it's also gonna be tied in with connectivity either across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And you could potentially get to the power lines.
Right.
Easement, or, um, as Providence Road gets developed, we've already discussed the sidewalks that are gonna be provided on Providence Road.
Yeah.
So, so there will be some connectivity there that people are able to, you know, potentially get, you know, notwithstanding the crossing of Providence Road.
There is a crosswalk, there is a crosswalk in the current Publix, uh, the Marvin Garden site design. So we don't have to wait till the, the widening to have that crosswalk.
Gotcha.
Do we need to be, when they do the widening, do, do we need to be concerned about them encroaching?
Yes, yes.
So then we don't, so really then it's probably gonna be more like half an acre?
We might expect about this much of it.
So really about half an acre.
To be taken up.
So we're, we're gonna have to kind of see how some of those other.
I mean, that's gonna be in twenty thirty, which could turn into twenty forty.
Yeah, so maybe there's, there's a mindset that you have a phase one, phase two development, just like how Publix, and, and I'm not advocating for this, just consider it, how Publix is building things that they know will be torn up in twenty thirty, um, that we may, you know, activate the, the space here, and I'll use a different, oh, shoot, I'll use a different color. So, so to activate this space here for something while it exists, knowing that, you know.
Right, it may go away.
Yeah, it may go away, but why not? Because it's there, there's no reason to waste it, yeah.
And you never know how much further it's gonna be.
Yeah, 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 cause I've heard twenty thirty, I've heard twenty thirty two, you know, it's just, that's, that's a decade that we don't need to be sitting on a, you know.
Usable land, that we can do something for, to communicate.
Right.
Just a quick question on that, uh, parking lot, um, I guess it's maybe on the line already, but is there already parking that we, you know, somebody could use that's real, that you could walk to that real easily on the path there?
Uh, not current, no, not currently, I mean, until the Weddington Chase builds a sidewalk connection and say they allow parking on the side of the street, but I doubt they will, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, in Publix's development.
Oh, in Publix's development, you, there, the parking is.
There's no parking lot next to it, by the way.
No, the parking lot is like all the way up there.
It's not easy to walk to.
No, no, you can't walk to this except for this parking lot. I mean, you could if you parked in the parking lot and then walked down here, but it's not like there's any other parking that's really accessible other than this parking right here.
Have they done that parking lot yet?
Um, it's almost done.
Okay, no, just wondering.
Yeah, the parking lot's almost done.
Cause it'll be finished for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any restrictions on the property because of stormwater or anything, like, did you use it?
Not that, no, not that I know of.
Cause all the stormwater's in the front corner, right?
Huh? Yeah, yeah.
For the stormwater?
Right, the drainage pattern is already that, you know, it collects along the curb and then it discharges it into several stormwater ponds that are not close to here.
Well, that'd be fun then, to do something fun there.
Yeah.
Let's start, let's start thinking, I mean, Publix is gonna be opening in the middle of the month.
Yeah, they're, they're official, officially opening on October twenty first.
So I say, let's start thinking of some fun things that we can put there as a group.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be today, they've just kind of cone this off and left it, uh, you know, wooded, so it'll be fine.
The way it is for now, but we can start, you know, thinking of some fun stuff to put in there for, you know, the people that are shopping at Publix or that wanna come and use it, and start coming up with some ideas.
Yeah, I, I, I think even.
I think even.
I guess, I'm sorry.
I think even if at the beginning, you know, we even just put some picnic tables and things like that to give people the opportunity, cause I don't know what else is in with Publix.
I, I don't either, I'm, I'm very excited to go over there and look and see what's, see what's going on, so.
Yeah.
I could get some vendors to come in and, you know, visualize the space and provide products. I mean, that small of area, you know, it could be worth it to put turf down, you know, and then we don't have to manage the grass, we have, um, artificial grass.
I think we should start coming up with some ideas, let's talk about it, it could be, you know, fun, fun, fun project for us.
Dig this equipment, dog park space, splash pad, tennis courts, no.
I'm worried about dog parks, just cause you're so.
Well, I was thinking the same thing, it's so close to this, yeah. But, but yeah, let's, let's start, let's start talking about it, that'll be fun, come up with some ideas. Derek, you can, you know, you don't have anything else to do, you can start working on this.
Yeah, you're off tonight, now.
Appreciate that.
Don't get it tonight.
All right.
That's right, there you go, perfect.
I know we're, we're running a bit over, um, anything else, um?
Not on this, um, I guess if the discussion on what to do with it is gonna happen in the future, then I, that's, that's all I've got.
Yeah, I, I think it, this has been off the radar for a little while, so let's get some ideas and.
Yeah, let's come up with some ideas. Especially if you have stuff in your mind or that we've talked about.
From our path.
Yeah, um, you know, I'll, uh, I think, I think we're good to kind of make, just make sure we have it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah.
So agenda for next month.
You know, Rohit, do you need us to do anything, or are we gonna have to approve this change?
Um, it's, it's administered, I think it's administrative change enough. It's just that it does pertain to a village of Marvin Park, so I wanted to get the PRG.
No, that's, that's fine, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't need it, that they were good to keep, keep moving forward, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
All right, um, moving on to the review of action items, Austin.
Okay, uh, Rohit, I probably missed something that, that you were assigned, but, um, okay, so, John, you'll reach out to Millen High School Choirs to inquire about singing at the tree lighting. Uh, Sheri, you'll reach out to the high school band. Derek will get, uh, parking revenue figures. Derek will reach out to the band that was supposed to play at National Night Out. I'll place a discussion of park fees on the agenda for the next PRG meeting. I'll send out the adopted twenty twenty-one meeting schedule, and I'll place discussion of the pocket park or something like that on, um.
Marvin Gardens Pocket Park.
On the agenda for the next meeting, and what were you assigned? I don't know if you were assigned anything of it?
Um, I mean, I'm gonna apply for the CRTPO grant, but other than that, I'll.
Yeah, you're gonna change the map, uh.
Yeah, yeah, change the map per, uh, what, what was discussed.
Which, which map, the.
The, uh, the scope.
Grant funding map.
Yeah, yeah.
Grand funding.
Scope map or what?
I'll call it scope, yeah, scope for the grant funding.
Then what do you have down for Derek for the tree lighting?
He's contacting, he's contacting the band, uh, the band for National Night Out.
Uh, no, I thought.
The National Night Out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For our Christmas.
Yeah.
And then John's checking on horses.
Yeah.
And did you, sorry, you made me say that, that Derek couldn't find the cost.
Yeah, the park.
All right. All right. Next item is if there are any board member comments, Christina?
I would just like to welcome both of them, well, Dan, you're sort of new to me because I didn't get to see you before. And Sherry, welcome to the, to the club. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, I, I wanted
Oh, go ahead, Sherry.
I wanted to come in, but I was a little under the weather and I didn't
I appreciate that.
No, I said, I, I wanted to be in today, I prefer to be in person, but I just had a little cold and I didn't want to take any chances, so I stayed home.
I appreciate that.
But hopefully I'll get to meet everybody in person.
Sounds good.
Dan? Two, two quick comments, I appreciate that, it's nice to meet everybody we haven't met yet. And two quick questions and maybe this isn't the time, I think I did this last time too. The one was, did we get the, the drainage or whatever's gonna happen over at the, we need to keep thinking about that or just sled ride for a little bit and see if we still have the flooding problems there?
Oh, are you talking about the Marvin Loop Trail drainage problems?
I see, we need to keep working on it.
Yeah, yeah, we need, we need to keep working on different options. We talked about the pipe, the pipe, it doesn't seem to be reasonable because you have to go very far to find a downhill, like a lower spot from the place that it's flooding. But
Yeah, like 200 feet.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, that's, that's, that is a lot. But the engineer is saying that whatever they did with this kind of ditch
It's a belter of a pipe.
Okay, I mean, I, I would love, I would love to see that happen, but our engineer seems to be against it. But we can definitely try to convince him and see if, you know, if that is
Well, one thing I was gonna suggest is, I think a lot of the work that was done this summer may have fixed the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been a really terrible rain.
Right, that was the other thing I was about to say, he's, he's, he's wondering if we even need to do anything anymore because whatever, whatever ditch work they did seems to be blocking most of the water except for in the most like heavy rains.
Yeah, and I can talk to the engineer and I have no problem.
Sure, sure, we'll have to get you in touch with Christina before we talk to the engineer just because we have him hourly, so. But yeah, we can, we can arrange that.
And, and you said two things?
I think, I think I would wait because I'm hoping watching that and I think it was this summer, it would be a crap on, but I think a lot of the problem has been solved by blocking water from coming in directions.
Okay.
I think that was all.
All right.
Good.
We'll keep an eye on it then, continue to.
And you said two things, Dan, was it or another?
I, yeah, I just actually have a question for my own, in my head, carrying numbers around. Do we have numbers that I can get access to on the costs of the Talmore Trail, like dising?
Yeah, that's a Derek question.
Can we put in there like the cost totals?
Yeah, yeah, you can email Derek or just, just talk to him offline, definitely though.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll find out for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Just tell them to call.
Yeah.
And then for me, from comment perspective, other than welcome, welcome to Sherry. Thank you so much and Dan, appreciate you really jumping in on any number of these different areas where, where you can provide expertise and professional advice has been great and really do appreciate you jumping in with both feet, so thank you very much. Okay.
Nice.
That concludes the Village of Marvin Parks Recreation in Greenways Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion on the table for us to adjourn at 11:05 AM here on October 6th, 2020? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks for coming in and thanks for putting up with the technical difficulty we had in the middle, but we made it through.